Good evening, everyone. Calling this meeting of Thursday, August 25th, 2022, Board of Directors of the Tacoma Public Schools to order. Everyone, please rise and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest law of the Constitution. The Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral lands and historical lands of the Pu'alip tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Pu'alip tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel Malik Benro. I love saying that. Will you call, but please call the roll?
President Bobeit.
Here.
Director Stroger.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
All right, moving. Thank you. And Director McElroy has been excused for today. Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments or questions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed abstaining. Okay, we have an agenda four zero. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, civic observances. And there, oh.
No civic observances for August.
Okay, thank you. There are none for August. Seven, superintendent's report. Seven point one, 2022 to 2023 budget presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, we have two presentations, or excuse me, one presentation and a report to the board on our comprehensive high school planning. And Ms. Rosalina Medina is going to jump up and help us with the budget, and then I have a few comments afterwards.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to present you with a little bit of an overview of what it is that's on the board agenda for this evening. We are required by the state to adopt a budget by August 31st as a district in this state. And we have worked for the last eight months to prepare our budget. In the state of Washington and in most governmental entities, we're required to follow fund accounting. This is a graphical representation of how each fund represents essentially its own checkbook. We'll be developing a budget for each one of these funds, with the exception of the trust funds. Those trusts funds are held in, on behalf of other agencies, so that we're just in, we're just holding them. We don't have to budget for them. The general fund revenues that we have anticipated for the 2223 year that will be included on the board resolution for adoption for your consideration this evening will represent $571,452,772. Our largest contributors are the state. Federal resources are our second largest, excuse me, levy is our second largest, and that's 13.4%. And then followed by federal in a typical year. You'll also note the Esser dollars that are included. Our Esser dollars represent $56 million of our budget for this next year. And those dollars will expire at the end of 2024. As the last year, we'll be able to use them right before we begin the 2425 school year. Our budgeted expenditures, which is what you actually approve for our expenditure authority, will be set at $598,543,984. The vast majority of those resources are allocated for staff benefits and salaries. And this represents actually 79% of our budget this year. Typically, it's about 85%. That's a standard. But with the Esser dollars that we have allocated out for a number of our supplies and materials, because we've tried to not use those for ongoing costs, we actually, if we took the Esser dollars out that we have for supplies and materials, we'd be at 86% of our budget for salaries and benefits, which is pretty typical of most school districts in the state. We are required to adopt a four-year budget for our general fund, and that will be included within the resolution this evening. For our other funds, we have a debt service fund that captures our repayments of bond payments. We will ask for expenditure authority of $69,166,900. Our associated student body fund, our resources that are raised and held on behalf of our students. And the students actually make all the decisions about how those resources will be spent, so they define the budgets. And that will be expenditure authority of up to $443,600. Our transportation vehicle fund, $800,800, buys our buses, our school buses for the next year. We have six planned for replacement. And then finally, capital and technology levy covers all of the bond dollars that we actually spend on building schools, not the repayment of the bond payments, like the mortgage payment. But this is the actual buying of and procurement of the assets that are going into schools and the building of the actual schools. Again, we have to do a four-year projection for those other funds. That's included within the resolution that you'll see at the end of the evening. And I would like to take a moment to thank all of the contributors and all of those public representatives that have provided us with any feedback. Our board has been amazing. You helped set our standards and our policies around what we should expect to do and what your expectations of us in developing the budget should look like. Our superintendent and cabinet helped to define the what and the how. Our budget and program managers get into the nitty-gritty details to make sure that we are allocating all the resources needed to help our students achieve those priority benchmarks. Our community outreach this year included a budget calculator, budget records out on our website, documentation that we included, budget hearing opportunities. And then finally, our budget team that put all those resources together. And I would just like to take a quick moment to thank Kristen Bell, our director, Jody Berry, Natasha Edwards, Diane Taylor, and Denise Hall for their work on the budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, and I echo your gratitude to the team. I know this is always a tough job, and these last few years have been extremely challenging. So thanks to you and your team. Does anyone have any questions for Rosalind? I know we've had many, many presentations. We had a budget. For those who haven't, who are listening, who haven't been following in the past, we had in July, we actually had a public hearing on this budget. So there are no surprises. It looks exactly like we had expected. So, and I know the board members have had a chance to reflect and look deeper into it on our own. So thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on.
Madam President.
Oh, yes, right. You wanted to say a couple of points?
Just a quick thank you to Rosalind and Kristen Bell and the entire team. It's maybe a subtle, but we actually do these two budgets, right? Our budgeting for priorities as well as the state one. And so if you haven't had a chance, and this will be typically posted online, it's quite comprehensive and there's a lot of details. And so we're extremely grateful. I also just want to take a moment to thank all those staff members and community partners that helped our kids over the summertime. As you may have gotten a chance to see that, at least at many of our high school campuses, kids are back on campus, and that's an exciting time. We are scheduled to start school right after Labor Day. So we still have, if you're a student of ours, you still have some days to sleep in, but encouraging folks to start to get into those routines. But our team of staff and community members did just an amazing job of offering programming this summer to try to keep our kids safe and engaged and supportive, and I'm extremely grateful for them. So thank you to all of you out there. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, great. Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, moving on to item eight, staff report to the board. Eight point one, HB 5030, comprehensive school counseling plan presentation.
So tonight, we have our team from the Team Whole Child, as I like to refer to him, led by Director Allen, to talk to us about some new legislation and what our plan is to meet those requirements of that new legislation. And more importantly, how do we do a better job of supporting staff and students and our community through our plan?
Good evening, Laura Allen, I'm Director of Whole Child. It's an honor to be here glistening with you. I am joined by our Assistant Directors Kate Fraser and Dr. Ronnie Gordon. We're here to share with you about, it has changed to substitute Senate Bill 5030. It is a requirement that every school district in the state of Washington has a comprehensive high school plan that's approved by the school board. So we'll be asking for your vote of approval later this evening on another agenda item. This plan must contain these four components, and that's in alignment with state and national standards, how to process or identify student needs, explaining how direct and indirect services will be delivered, and finally, in the spirit of continuous improvement, establishing an annual review and assessment process. So we'll just share briefly about each one of those components, starting with the first one, alignment with state and national standards. Now Tacoma, a few years ago, adopted the ASCA model. ASCA stands for American School Counselor Association, and it is really the gold standard for school counseling. There are three main domains for our school counselors with the ASCA model. That's academic, career, and social-emotional development. To further align with that first component, we are required to have our school counselors, at a minimum, spend 80% of their time with indirect or direct services in those three domains, so the academic, career, and social-emotional, to serve students. Now, 20% or less can be spent on things such as program planning, school supports, and fair share agreements. An example of this would be at the end of a school day, it is all hands on deck to ensure a safe and efficient school dismissal process. However, the rest of the time, they would be with students, 80% or more of the time. And that's to ensure that throughout the state of Washington, students have equitable access to their counselors in social-emotional, academic, and career.
Good evening, I'm Kate Fraser, co-director with Whole Child. So in the plan, you'll see that we've kind of bulleted out some examples of what these direct and indirect services look like, and specific by social-emotional, academic, and career. But just to put into perspective, an example of direct service would be maybe a student is having a panic attack or an anxiety attack. And so the counselor is going to spend the time working with that student, working to calm the student down, maybe calling the family, having the family come in. All that's direct services. Anytime that our counselors are in front of kids and working with families. The indirect services would be more along the lines of a following up after that plan. So maybe they're gathering resources for parents. Maybe they're working on a one-on-one meet time with the teacher to make sure that they're continuing to work with the student in the classroom. So anything that's associated with that direct services, that they're working behind the scenes, would be the examples of indirect services. Kind of the same with academics. If you have a student that comes in and expresses that they're struggling maybe in a class or a course, and so talking about maybe the need for tutoring support and that, so you have that conversation that's direct services around academics. Indirect would be that counselor going to the teacher, kind of talking through what are some options for the student, maybe setting them up with tutoring services would be an indirect response to that.
Good evening, I'm Ronnie Gordon, Assistant Director of Whole Child. When it comes to career readiness, when we think of elementary school, this last past year, I had the opportunity to go to one of our elementary schools where they had a college fair. When it comes to direct services, it would be actually students in front of the college admittance people, as well as other community members that were like job exploration. When it comes to indirect services, it would be something like the school counselor, school social worker, setting up that opportunity for elementary school students, and this happens in high school often, too. Provided process for identifying student needs. So we're asking our school counselors, school social workers to use multiple data resources, such as the district MTSS teams, our Whole Child teams, a district-led needs assessment, data analysis when it comes to attendance behavior, as well as academics. This year, we have someone that's part of our Whole Child team that's going to be an attendance specialist counselor, district data sources, climate survey, which happened this last past year, as well as the needs assessment, Power BI, informative assessments. We're also going to be using the second year rollout to get more stakeholder engagement. So that comes with community engagement for administrators, parents, students, as well as family members.
In the second component, when we have that data, then we know if students are on track, and they would fall into tier one, where they're receiving universal supports, things that all students are entitled to, and they're doing really well with that. But we know that a few students need some extra help. So for example, maybe a fourth grade student is feeling like they don't have friends at school. A school counselor might invite them to join other students to be part of a lunch bunch, where they have a chance to work on relationship skills and make some good friends, so they have that feeling of belonging. And then we know from our data then that there are a few students who would need intensive supports. In this scenario, a school counselor might be the one who facilitates a referral to one of our fabulous mental health agencies in our community, and they would then be able to receive ongoing therapeutic care through that agency.
So it's important to know that direct services are when the school counselors and school social workers are in front of the students and families supporting them, whereas indirect is when they're doing the work outside of the time in front of them in order to find support, whether it's community supports for mental health and or helping with scholarships and things like that. Program planning support involves data collection and tier one, two, and three support. For tier two, that's where the counselors live a lot, but it's not always their job necessarily to be the person in charge. So it's making sure that it is wraparound services. There's a team when it comes to tier two and three, as well as tier one. Fair share responsibilities, which Laura mentioned earlier, is an opportunity to work side by side with other certificated staff members, so everyone's working as a team versus just a school counselor, school social worker doing something. For this upcoming school year, this is the second year of, which is 5030, so we're asking that engage ongoing professional development aligned with TPS comprehensive school counseling plan. This year, we're going to be working with community stakeholders to get more input. Also collaborating, developing small group instruction aligned with data collection through CBT. We have a specialist who's been working with us as a community partner. Participate in anti-racist professional development aligned with comprehensive school counseling plan. Engage in counselor and social worker PLCs throughout the year, which align our focus when it comes to our comprehensive counseling plan.
And something new that's going to be implemented as part of this plan is an assessment review through the district lens. So we'll pull together a team at the end of the year. We're asking counselors to do some time tracking so that we can really look at what our data says around that 80 and 20%. We'll gather all that together. We'll have a team come through, look at that information in addition to other data, make recommendations. And then once the district team does that, then the buildings take that back, and we're asking counselors to meet with administrators and review the success of the program, changes for next year. So that'll be an expectation at the end of each year, in addition to kind of a launch, too, to meet and set goals. This is just an example. We're going to use the ASCA tools this year to start off with in developing these assessments and annual reviews. But the hope is that as we hone in and get better and better, that we'll adapt them to meet our needs as well. But we thought this was a good foundation to start from. And then just part of our process in developing the plan that's with you today, we had a planning team come together about February. We went all the way through May, key communicators on there. So our biggest piece of this team was that there was no surprises, right? That we were communicating with our counselors, our social workers, all the time. So it was really this ebb and flow process where we'd have a planning team come together. We'd have our counseling meeting. We'd share everything that was happening at the planning teams, get feedback, get feedback, bring it back in, make change and adjustments. And also, everyone on the team was also a key communicator. So after meetings, they were expected to go out to their key networks, gather, 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 bring that information back, because we wanted as many eyes on this as possible. And so just on the left is an example of the matching planning team and the representatives that joined us and were a big part. And we thought two hours each meeting throughout those months, so it was a big commitment to do. And then last, we just want to end. We know that this is a Senate bill. We know that this is an expectation that we're turning in, but want you to know that it's so much deeper than that for us, that our why behind it is not just because it's an expectation, but it's something that we're really committed and passionate to. And just an example of our why, and we put together just some of the major headlines that came across this year around social-emotional health. So not even the academic and career part. This is social-emotional health for our kids. And these are news articles that came through King Five, through, you know, just a multi-care, variety of places. So you'll see with multi-care, 400% increase in children with emergency mental health care support. The increase in fentanyl deaths that are happening and drug addiction. So just a lot of articles. And the most recent one, the suicide rates are rising among black youth. That just came out this past week through King Five News. And one of the other pieces that we're seeing with this, and why it's so critical for counselors to be in front of our kids as much as possible, is that there's a shortage in our community around therapists and healthcare. And so there's like a six-month waitlist. So the access, and I know there's high turnover rates, so just all the more reason that we just have our counselors there and being that support and trying to navigate and get our kids the support they need.
Just a wholehearted thank you for your time tonight. And as always, we want to share appreciation and just enormous respect to our school counselors and social workers. They are the best of the best.
Thank you so much. That was a great presentation. Did a superintendent want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to echo my gratitude for the depth of the work that was put into this. And also, I just want to also calibrate that what's unique about this plan is that, yes, counseling and what they do is a fundamental piece of that. But you see that there's a lot of other supports. And that's also designed to make sure that we don't put so much pressure on counselors because they alone will never be able to meet all the demands of every child, nor is that a reasonable request for them. And so with our counselor expertise throughout the district, in my opinion, did a really nice job of saying, this is where we can really put a lot of our efforts in the sweet spots in these big categories, and this is where we need to refer out and invest in other community partnerships in there. And so I was, I'm very grateful for the systemic approach, the tiered supports, but not leaving it on one just specific role. And so I just want to echo that and my gratitude to the counseling and the social worker team and affirmation of support that we're not going to ask them to do everything. That is not a reasonable task as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. So Ronnie, you mentioned a Whole Child attendance, and then I lost the rest of the title. I was just curious if you could talk a little bit more about the role of this additional person in, within the Whole Child team and how that will, like, yeah, just a little bit more about that role.
In partnership with OSPI and PSESD, we were offered a grant for a limited time to have, to improve our attendance. We had roughly 14,000 students that were chronically absent last year. That's defined as missing more than 90% of the time. So there were students that were getting straight A's, but due to COVID protocols, were missing time, and other students that were really struggling. So we now have Jimmy Gier, who's coming to us from Sheridan Elementary School, and he will be on board, helping us build belonging campaigns, supports. For example, we have one high school that has requested a washer and dryer so that students can attend school with dignity and have access to that. And so we want to remove barriers, be proactive in larger campaigns. But in partnership with PSESD, there will also be individual case support for our most chronically absent.
Thank you. And then the other question I was curious about, the mention of like the collection of data throughout the school year and then the reflection at the end of the school year. Wondering if there's an expectation to present to the board, like that data throughout the year? Because it seems like that would be, I don't know, I'll speak for me. I think it would be, I would really appreciate, especially since this is a new practice and a new plan, just to see where, like, how it went and what was recognized.
That would be an honor.
And then I appreciate the comment about the shortage of mental health therapists, and I don't, lost track, we said that, in the community. And I think like what's also important is there's this expectation of counselors and we, and within the community, without necessarily understanding what school counselors are responsible for. And this was very exciting to me because it really helps lay that out in terms for those in those roles and others. And also, there's few mental health therapists that work with youth under the age of 13. And that's been a chronic issue for years. And so what I hope is like this will also help inform our families and staff and community in terms of where are the gaps, where are the needs, and how are we addressing them within our own system? And also striving to provide wraparound services. So I just want to echo like the gratitude and thanks to the work that went into this. And I'm really encouraged to see where we are at a year.
Great. Director Stroger, do you have anything? Director Leon?
I think, thank you for the presentation and the thoughtful planning, especially discussing like the well-rounded team that you had. And the whole planning process is important, I think, for the whole community to know that it was not made by just a few folks, but really well-thought-through. And just, I agree with all these comments that Director Keating had made. And the partnerships that Dr. Garcia has mentioned are important to note that we hear and say this a lot, that a lot of the community expects the schools to take on way larger roles than we're really able to do. But I think that if everybody has a clear understanding of what the roles are and what the partners are, then we could succeed more. And yeah, I'd be interested to see what, see what this, we talked about the time, tracking the time. I think, I thought I heard you say at the end of the year, you track it or something like that to see how the 80/20 split is going. Because you can see how, there's not enough time in a day to do all the things that people want to do. I think it should be done, but you need to draw some lines and have wellness for our staff, too. So, thank you.
Well, as you can tell, we're all very enthusiastic and interested in this project and want to thank you all, three of you, plus the whole team behind it. And I will echo the comments that Director Vice President Keating and Director Leon also made. And, you know, I'm really interested in the data, and I really want, I'm looking for it. I love that you suggested we do it periodically and not just wait till the end. I know that that can be skewed, and it might not really be representative of what we'll find at the end, but it's nice to have sort of an idea. And mainly because, going back to what the superintendent had mentioned about partnerships, it happens to be not only a board goal in our strategic plan, but one of the board goals that we have around mental health, and then also the work that we're doing at JMAC with our partner agencies around the mental health of folks in our community. And so rather than working in silo, it's just great if we can take that information regularly back to our partners that are also struggling with the shortage of counselors in the community and figure out an answer together. So really looking forward to this and so grateful that we're doing it. And I did have one question, Laura, for you, that, can you tell us how this? I mean, it looks really aligned, but how you're integrating this with the SEL work that's happening in classrooms? It seems to me that we're building the foundation around that, but I'd love to know the role of the counselors now. Has that shifted? Is it, you know, the teachers are working with the kids, but now we have counselors? And just a little bit more about that interrelationship around SEL plans?
Yes, we're excited to have SEL curriculum K-12 now at the stage. This is really exciting. We are asking, our elementary schools have time on the master calendar for classroom teachers to explicitly teach social-emotional learning. Where elementary counselors would come in, their role would be in supporting teachers or helping to expand in small groups for some students that could use a little bit of revisiting on some of those SEL lessons. At the secondary, we're brand new, and so we're working through that. But we are looking to have SEL during advisory lessons at the secondary level.
Great. All right, well, looking forward to hearing that data.
Yeah, I just, and Laura's team, if you go back to slide seven, if you want to learn more, there's some great cross-references with the Whole Child pillars. Restorative spaces, the SEL explicit curriculum, the advanced tiers in the pillars is a fundamental piece. But once again, it's not designed that counselors or a social worker or one individual. And so when Laura and the team mentioned Whole Child teams, that's what it really is. And so everyone plays a significant role in those pieces, but we should also recognize that one person can't do it alone. It's truly a team effort. And so that's slides, or I guess it's not slide, it's slide five, page seven, really talks about that SEL.
Fantastic. Well, and I'm very proud that our district is so committed to the Whole Child, Whole Educator component, and really, it's walking the talk. So thank you for doing this. Appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. And we'll get to that, adoption of that plan in a later point on the agenda. Item number nine, meeting members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation, and your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to comments during the board meeting. Board members will not respond to comments during the board meeting. Superintendent or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@tacoma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. So rather than reading all this bit about your options, I'll just say there are two options. One's verbal comments here tonight at the board and the other are written comments. I don't, I believe that there are no written comments, so I'll turn, is that correct? Okay, no written comments tonight. So I'll turn it over to general counsel to talk about, to see if there are any verbal comments. Okay, no verbal comments. Thank you, everyone. And moving on to item number 10 then, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any additions or comments about the consent agenda? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes four zero. Item 11, policy matters. We have made it to this point and we're very excited. 11.1, second reading of new policy 1600 anti-racism.
1600 anti-racism.
All right, well, we have before us a policy that was initiated by the board. And Director Stroger was, was the one who brought the question to us at our March 1st retreat, when we worked with Beth Boggs and, and asked some, some good questions about, you know, what we could do and to be effective. And thank you for that, Director Stroger, and got us thinking and talking. And we spent another study session in, in, or two, two, yes, two, two study sessions in April and May on this issue. And then draft, and part of that was drafting this agenda, this item that you have before you. So I am now going to, that's the background, and if we have a motion, we can then talk about it. Does anyone want to move? I think I'm looking over here.
I move to adopt item 11.1.
A second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Anyone have any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Who would have thought that we've gotten this, this far this fast? So no thoughts, because I feel like I've shared a lot about the policy itself. But what I will say is just the appreciation to everybody who had their hands in developing this policy to get really, to make it a policy that could potentially be a national model for folks who don't have one. That's my honest opinion about what I think about the policy. I think it's great, very well-written, a very straight-to-the-point, firm in what we believe as a district. So I stand by that. I'm excited that we are at this point, and I appreciate everybody who has something to do with it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just echo what Cory said. And I think when I, when I've talked about this policy and the conversations that we've had over the last multiple months, it has shifted, it just has shifted how we discuss and look at things. And I'm really, I'm just really also grateful that, I mean, even though this was something we discussed collectively as a board and initiated, the support from the superintendent and his team and the community that have supported us in this process has been, we, we wouldn't be here tonight without all of you. And so I'm grateful also for everyone who has contributed to this policy.
Great, thank you. And I just will, will add to that, for those who may not have been following this along with this, it was by no means a singular task of the board. So to echo that, we also reached out to folks in the community and we asked, as it's been on the website, we've asked for a lot of input, and the Equity Policy Review Team, who works, looks at all of our policies now, really dove into this one and made some really interesting and very impactful changes. And so I want to thank to the Equity Policy Review Team. And also, I want to thank Renee Trueblood, who is no longer in the chair as General Counsel, but she was spearheading this when we started it. So I want to thank you. And then also thank Malik Benrow, who took us over the finish line and really helped us get to what we want. But, but back to Renee, I think one of the things that's so important is how we framed this. It's different than a normal policy. And that's because we talked a lot about it being foundational and really driving more than just, we shall do this and we shall do that. It really talks about what we believe as, as, as a district and as a board and as the administration. And, and I want to, I want to thank Renee for, I kept saying that, I kept saying, you know, it's, it's what we believe, it's what we think, you know? And, and so she wrote it to, to come out, we believe. And it's so powerful. When I read it, I mean, that, I just get goosebumps. It's because the we believe statements are strong and then the thou shalt and what we're going to do are follow. And I just want to commend you, Renee, and also Malik, because both of you were very instrumental in the language of this and we appreciate it. So, yeah. And then the other part about it that I think is interesting, just for the public to know, is that there's definitions in here. Because we all know that when we say, when we use terms like racism or institutional racism, we have in our head what that definition is, and that frames how we read the, the statements, right? The we believe statements and the policy itself. And so we decided as a group that we wanted to have a unified language or definitions. And so we went out and looked into GARE, which is the Governmental Alliance for Racial Race, Race and Equity, something like that, yeah. And they come up with, this is, they advise governments all over the country. And we used theirs as the base. And then we added some, some definitions to make them a little stronger around how, what, what we're thinking and what we want to, what we, how we want to come forth and show and, and be. And so you'll find that all in here, a purpose, a series of we believe statements that then talk about impact on the students and the staff and the community, and then the definitions. And so hopefully, everyone will, once we can take the redlining out and just have the actual final document, it'll be a little easier to see. But I encourage everyone to read it and really personalize it and, and join us in, in working to make this part of who we are here in, in our community. So thank you very much. All right, any other comments? I call for the motion then to be voted on. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes four to zero. Thank you. I think that's just wrong. Oh, I meant to say thank you to the superintendent as well, who was also very, and, and Carla Santoro, I forgot to mention that. She was also impactful in this, so thank you to that, all the people involved. All right, I, the next item is 11.2, and it's a first reading of revised policy 6213, travel authorization and, and expense reimbursement.
District's General Counsel recommends the board review their revised proposed policy 6213 and provide feedback in advance in the second reading.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, I think Roslin has a few things to tell us about it.
Okay, while she's walking up, I'll ask for a motion. Oh, no, we're not doing a motion because it's a first reading, so we're just waiting for Roslin.
The second reading.
To jaw that.
Did you ask me to come up and talk about it, Malik?
Yes.
I can't hear from back there very well. Yeah, the, the travel policy is meant to help us define what it is that we're allowed to do. And we noticed when we looked at the travel regulations and the policy that it hadn't been updated in a good 20 years. And things have changed a little bit in 20 years. So as we reviewed the policy, we recognized that there were a couple of items that we felt more, better aligned into the regulation so that we could manage those from the internal district perspective. And that what we were hoping from our board was to give us the authority to allow us to send people to travel and to define what it was the board would be defining as what the policy around travel would look like. We didn't make significant modifications to the expectations because a lot of the things that are redlined in the policy have actually moved into the regulation. So I think the biggest thing that you could note as a modification is, we would not have the board approve out-of-state travel for staff, that that would become an internal function. But we've committed, because we know that there's a public perception around that, we've committed to notifying you of what those travel authorizations were so that you can have visibility and awareness around those. And, and helps keep us honest around making sure that we're not sending people on adventures, that this is appropriate work-related travel, and that that's the intent behind all of the regulations that we've put in place as well.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so we look forward to diving in a little deeper. Don't go anywhere, I think you're next. Anyway, I, well, maybe not.
No.
Financial part, oh no, we don't have one today. Shock, surprise. Anyway, I, I will look forward to seeing what comes out of it for next, the second reading. The Equity Policy Review Team will be looking at it too, so.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so you're off the hook this month, but the financial report, the district quarterly report is, where's my, oh, here, bigger and I can see it. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for November 2022. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at https backslash backslash www.tacomaschools.org backslash departments backslash business and finance. Right, curriculum and instruction. Item, which is item 13, item 13.1, approval of contract number TSD-22-143 BHC Fairfax Hospital Northwest Soil and Tacoma Public Schools, September 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2023.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-22143 Northwest School of Innovative Learning for September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023 for an estimated cost of $600,000. Funding source, student services.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt item 13.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes four zero. Item 13.2, approval of contract number TSD, thank you, Tracy, TSD-22-176 between Clover Park School District and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2022-23 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-22176 between Clover Park School District and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2022-2023 school year for an estimated cost of $114,000. Funding source, special education.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 13.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions about this item? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Passes three zero. Item number 13.3, approval of contract number TSD-22-165 between Central Washington University and Tacoma Public Schools for the school year 2022-2023.
And Madam President, as we have fans to try to cool one up here, we're going to all need to speak really loud into the mics so that the sound folks can make sure that we can connect up to. The Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Directors of Schools, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-22-165 between Central Washington University and Tacoma Public Schools for college and the high schools from August 29th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 13.3.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions about this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? Passes. Item 13.4, approval of contract number TSD-22, TSD-22-161 between Edmunds College and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2022 to 2023 school year.
The Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of K-12 and the Director of Schools recommends the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-22-161 between Edmunds College and Tacoma Public Schools for college and the high schools from August 29th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
All right, do we have a motion?
To adopt.
A second.
It's moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Just a question. Question. Just a question around, it says in here, it's, this is an arrangement between Edmunds and Mount Tacoma High School, but is it, are there, any of the other high schools involved with that university, with Edmunds? Or is it just the?
It's for this very specific course.
Very specific, okay, okay.
It doesn't mean that they won't expand in different areas in the future, but we would bring that back to you, but for this very specific course.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Item 13.5, approval of an SSB 5030 Comprehensive School Counseling Plan for Tacoma Public Schools from August 25th, 2022 to August 24th, 2025.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Director of Whole Child recommends that the Board of Directors approve SSB 5030 Comprehensive School Counseling Program Plan for Tacoma Public Schools from August 25th, 2022 through August 24th, 2025.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 13.5.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we just heard the presentation from staff. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Shall we call for the votes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Moving on to item 14, business matters. 14.1, approval of Microsoft Volume Licensing Campus Agreement, two years of a three-year agreement, 2022 to 2023.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve Microsoft Volume Licensing Campus Agreement for the 2022-2023 school year with an approximate cost of $388,019.95. Funding source, Technology General Fund.
Okay, thanks, Ed. It was a little hard to hear you, going closer to the mic if there are any questions. Do we have any, anyone motion?
I move to adopt.
Okay, it's been moved.
I'll say it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? I have a question. It says it's a, a year two of a three-year contract. So are we doing them annually? We're renewing this annually? Or is this a two years of the, is it the last two years or is it just the?
It's a three-year agreement that they bill us annually, but it breaks that $200,000 barrier, so I've come to the board every year.
Okay, so it's an every year thing. Okay, that's what I just want to be, be clear. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four zero. Thank you, Ed. 14.2, approval, that, approval of the Silance Antivirus Annual Renewal.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the renewal of the Silance Agreement for the 2022-2023 school year for an estimated cost of $280,000. Funding source, Technology General Fund.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.2. A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about this one? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes four zero. Thank you, Ed. Item 14.3, approval of District American Sign Language Interpreter Services Negotiation and Contract ASL Professionals.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and the Director of Student Services recommend that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to negotiate and award the contract for American Sign Language Interpreter Services to ASL Professionals for the period of September 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2027.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.3.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Item 14.4, approval of the guaranteed maximum price, GMP Amendment 1 to the contract between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Absor Construction for Phase 2 of the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle Project. It's a mouthful.
Yes, this is the constant continuation of our.
Closer to the mic, yeah.
Yes, this is the constant continuation of the security upgrades across the district. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment 1, which states to guarantee maximum price for the installation of access controls, intrusion detection, and intercom system, and authorize the Superintendent or Designee to sign said GMP Amendment 1 in the amount of $2,384,425 excluding sales tax.
Great, thank you so much, Chris. Anyone have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Item fourteen point five, Approval of the Agreement Between Tacoma Public Schools District Number Ten and Appshire Construction. Oh, didn't we just, that's what we just passed. Seems like, didn't I just say that?
Phase one.
Astros and.
There's two.
Oh, it's two of them. Okay, yeah, okay. Acture Construction and for Phase Two of the Safety, Safety and Security Bundle.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve Phase Two Agreement and authorize the Superintendent or designated to sign the Amendment Document. For the completion of the designated scope to complete Phase Two Agreement sum in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Three hundred and forty-one dollars excluding sales tax.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Oh, do I have an emotion?
I move to adopt fourteen point five.
Alright, we're shifting.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Item fourteen point six, Approval to Award Bid Number B two-two-zero-three-eight-C. To Sound Energy Systems for the Lister Elementary School and Point Defiance Elementary School. Energy Management System, which is E M S Controls Replacement Project.
Yes, this is part of our process of the twenty twenty bond to be more engine efficient and replace our control systems across the district. The Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors approve the Superintendent to award the bid to Sound Energy Systems. For the Lister E S and Point Defiance E S Energy Management System Controls Replacement Project. The total award amount is seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars excluding sales tax.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point six.
Second.
Alright, it's been double seconded. Moved and seconded. All, any questions or comments on this one? Oh, Director Leon.
So, you mentioned it's a move to help with the environmental stewardship. Just think for the public, any examples of how that might be done through this? Is this automatic lights that go off? Temperature controls, just a few examples for the public.
If you look at some of our previous systems, there are a lot of extensions on manual. So someone actually has to come in where this is virtual, where you can actually control the systems.
Oh, great.
Through a dashboard on the computer, so it's more efficient for us, and it saves the district dollars over time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Thank you, Chris. Item fifteen, Other Business.
Fourteen point seven.
Oh, fourteen point seven. I just checked it off, so there you go. Approval to Award R F P two-two-zero-two-eight-F to Eltech Systems LLC. For Elevator Maintenance, Inspection, Testing and On-Call Services for District Elevators. Sorry, Molly laughing because the elevator went out today.
I'm very excited about this issue.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to negotiate and award a five-year contract for Eltech Systems LLC. With an option for an additional two-year extension for maintenance, inspection, testing and on-call services for Eltech Systems LLC. The estimated total value, five-year, the estimated total five-year value of the contract is six hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Excluding sales, excluding tax.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point seven.
Okay.
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Other than hurry, hurry, right? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Other Business, fifteen point one, Adoption of Resolution Number two-one-one-zero. Adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number two-one-one-zero. Providing for the adoption of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget.
I move to adopt item fifteen point one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We, I mean, we've had a wonderful presentation tonight, so I don't know if there are any other questions, but I'll ask any questions or comments. Just thank you again for your hard work. Alright, all those in favor say aye. Oh, no, nope, back me up. It's a resolution, so I need the general counsel to read. General counsel to read the role.
We already said, uh.
President Bonbry, adieu vote.
Here. I'm an aye. I am here.
Director Stroger, adieu vote.
Aye.
Director Keating, adieu vote.
Aye.
Director Leon, adieu vote.
Aye.
First passes.
Okay, passes four zero. Thank you so much. Alright, fifteen point two, Adoption of Resolution Number two-one-one-three. And Acceptance of the Contract Between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Corsmo Construction Company.
I just wanted to say a couple of words about this project. It's very special for our team and the district. And we're finally at the point of actually closing out the project. This was the first design build project for the state of Washington for K to twelve. Which kind of kickstarted the district with that delivery method. It also was in twenty twenty, the project of the year for the state for K to twelve. And it was the first project for the district in which we had over twenty percent participation in minority of women-owned business. So it's, it's a special moment for our team to finally close it out. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number two-one-one-three. For the Acceptance of Project Completion and Approve the Acceptance of Contract with Corsmo Construction Company for the Bowles Elementary School Replacement.
Do a motion.
I move to adopt item fifteen point two.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Madam President, I also believe that it was the first project that Mr. Williams and Mr. Aldridge and their team led together. And so we're extremely grateful.
Thank you. No, it's a, and it's a beautiful building, so. Thank you very much. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's a resolution. Malik, I need you.
President Bonbry, adieu vote.
I vote aye.
Director Stroger, adieu vote.
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
First passes.
Alright, I'm gonna get it one of these days. I just got so excited about the building. Thank you, Chris, and your team for all your work. Alright, on to item number sixteen, Board Comments and Reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Alright, Director Stroger.
Not much to report, other than this past weekend, I believe, I was at the Eastside Community Center. At the Zack Banner Backpack Giveaway, participated in a, in a panel discussion, which is something that they don't typically do. Most of the time, it's just, hey, show up, give out backpacks, and then get up out of there. But we wanted to find a different way to engage the community, both parents and, and students. So it was great. Antonio McLemore, who leads the Eastside Community Center, kind of got Zack's team to, you know, dig in a little deeper. And they did so, and when they left there, they were like, we're glad we did this, and we're glad we did it here on the east side of Tacoma. So, parents were grateful that they were able to sit down and engage in conversation. I had a good time, and also there's a lot of backpacks given away, great food given away. So it was a great time to engage in the community on the east side, and folks are looking forward to getting back to school. So that's what I spent a little time doing this weekend. I thought I should bring it to the table and share here.
Thank you, that's fabulous. Alright, Director Leon, do you have anything to share?
Sure. Exciting to see a lot of kids back in school, just around the extracurricular activities and sports. I think it's really gonna help their mental health, and we were talking about what the counseling services are gonna be. Expanding to and doing for our kids, I think also speaking in school, obviously. This trend around mental health issues that was happening before the pandemic came and that made it worse. So being back in school, of course, it's gonna be, it's gonna be wonderful for the mental health, and the extracurriculars are always a big plus for them. I'd like to thank partners that helped my residents and my faculty do. The physicals, sport physicals at Mount T a few weeks ago, three hundred plus, almost four hundred physicals were done there. So, you know, Travel Health Authority, residents and faculty helped, East Pierce Family Medicine. Physicians and practitioners also, so thank you for all them, and the rest of the T P S staff that really helped organize it all, so thank you.
Thank you.
Three hundred plus physicals given for free by the medical community is no small.
Three hundred plus.
Yes, in one day.
Wow.
Screens and stuff, so we're extremely grateful to all the partners and just to their leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Keating.
Want to start back, I, early in the month, I think it was, it's National Night Out on the. So I went to Green Trikes event in Shawishan on, I think that was August second. And there were a ton of community partners there, and City of Tacoma was there. And one of the cool things the City of Tacoma is doing is they have a fund where, for each district. And they, and the community members can vote. They, so they were collecting submissions on how each district could spend their money. And so, like, I was at the city booth for quite some time, and there were a lot of families and young kids there, and they were talking about, we want a basketball court. We want like, these, all of these things. And so then eventually, the communities themselves in each district will have an opportunity to vote. On how that money is spent. So it's a pretty exciting, I didn't know about the initiative, so I was excited to learn about that. And just see, it was, it was really an amazing event that Green Trike put on. And then the Admin Institute feels like it was a long time ago, but it probably just happened. I have no sense of time, but that was really, I, I really appreciated just the parts, the parts that I participated in. And the Fireside Chat, is that what it was called? That was, that was a really fun and just like a courageous conversation, and I appreciated that. And then last Thursday, right, was the summer two-five, Summer Jobs two-five-three ten-year anniversary. Now, Jobs two-five-three, but that was an amazing event and just celebration of the students that participated. And got to watch them get paychecks, which was awesome. And then I've also kept up with the WASDA Federal Relations Network meetings. And there's a lot of strategizing around the advocacy, the NSBA Advocacy Institute in January twenty twenty-three. In D C and just trying to align priorities statewide through WASDA and colleagues. And so that was, that's been really interesting work that I've appreciated. And then yesterday, for the first time, I didn't know this happened, but the League of Voters has a lunch.
League of Women Voters?
Or just, well, you know, it wasn't the League of Women. I don't know, it was interesting. But, so there was this event on, it's a regular lunch, and they do, I think, bi-monthly, I think. But yesterday was, they had the State of Special Education in Washington State. And it was a really interesting, they had two students with disabilities and share, from different parts of the state. Share their experiences, and a couple of them have actually been really involved advocates. One of them is a sophomore in a high school in Spokane. And so there was just a lot of conversation around improving systems. And that it isn't just one place or one agency or one group, that this is a collective. It needs to be a collective effort to continue to improve special education services and inclusion. And so it was just a very, there was a lot of data that was shared that I will, I will share out once I get it. It just, I, it was a kind of conversation that I'm not typically involved in around special education that I really appreciated. And then, yeah, and then getting ready for the first day of school.
Okay, how exciting. Okay, well, it sounds like we're all really busy. I'm gonna add a few more things. I did also attend the Administration, Administration Institute, Administrative Institute. And the Summer Jobs two-five-three ten-year anniversary, which was fabulous. And actually had the opportunity to go and talk with every single one of the vendors who was there. To meet with our students and staff and learned a little bit about what, what they had to offer, and listen to them talk with the students. And there was just so much enthusiasm. It was, it was at Silas High School, and there were vendors, and they took up the whole parking lot. And I don't, can't remember how many there were, but there were a lot. And there was food and, and a lot of enthusiasm. These kids picked up their paychecks and then went and talked to prospective employers. And it was, it was great. And Corsmo Construction was a big part of making that event happen, so thank you to them. And thank you to Silas for hosting it. And then in addition to that, I've also participated in WASDA meeting on Board Self-Evaluation Tools. Which was fascinating and came in very handy, because on August eighteenth, which was last week. On last Thursday, we had a, a, a board retreat, and the focus of this board retreat was our self-evaluation tool, which we had all completed. And also then looking forward to our goal-setting, not making decisions, but talking about what was it that we, you know, how we. Thought the year had gone, how we progressed on last year's goals, and what we wanted to do for future goals. And so we've got some great ideas as a group around where we go from here, and now we'll, you know, proceed with that. In one, in maybe a study session, or we're gonna work with the Superintendent to figure out what the best time to do, to do that work is. And we also talked about the goals for the Superintendent, which are very aligned with the strategic plan. And, you know, of course, the goals that we're putting forward. So that was a great retreat, and we did it at the new T P S classroom that's at Owen Beach. And I don't know if the public, many of the public has had a chance to go to Owen Beach. It's, it's been re-ven- rejuvenated, I will say, actually. It wasn't just renovated, it was rejuvenated, and they've moved it back because of global warming and elevated some of the, the concrete pieces. So that, to avoid flooding, and it is just beautiful. And there is a joint partnership with Metro Parks and, and others in T P S to build a classroom right there. At Owens Beach, which is all glass walls. It's fantastic. It's small, but it's, it's a small classroom, but it's available to all of our schools. To be able to access during the year and gives the kids a place to be if it's out of the rain and out of the weather, but also has the whole beach in front of them. So we experienced that, and that was super fun. The windows were up, the doors were up, and it was loud. It was a warm, warm August night, and families were out, and at one point, we were in the middle of, you know, a conversation. And a toddler ran in, and the parent chased her, chased her just, you know, was so embarrassed. It was like, no, this is great. I mean, this is really in community, doing work in community, so it, it was kind of fun. Anyway, so that was last week. Also, I have done, the Foundation for Tacoma Students had a board meeting, which I attended. Along with the Superintendent, who also is on that board. And they're moving, you know, they're focusing a lot on post-secondary pathways and how to help students that graduate. From Tacoma Public Schools and other schools in Pierce County, you know, move to successfully have a career or an educational pathway. So that's great work that they're, they're doing. I also, J Mac had a meeting on August twelfth, and it was Safety and Security Part Two. So last, last month, we talked with just amongst ourselves elected officials about what's happening within our communities. I mean, our agencies, and then this was the quarterly meeting with CEOs. And so we had given them some challenge questions about safety and security and, you know, how, how we could work on both. To support the Tacoma public, so the Tacoma City Plan, the Police Department's Plan. On addressing violent crime, primarily, they've got an intensive approach for that. But also then how we as community partners, elected officials and agencies can help kind of fulfill the rest of that piece. And, you know, talk about other kinds of crime that are going on that might not be violent crime, but that are certainly annoying. Or damaging to the public and the citizens and the businesses in our area. And it was a very, it was really an interesting, an interesting conversation with the CEOs from each of the organizations. And I think they, everyone is taking this to heart, and I think this kickstart with the new police chief is going to, is going to be great. And it, but we were already doing this work about security. And Dr. Garcia actually posed, in his presentation, posed a really wonderful philosophical question. That gets down to practical application, which is what does safety mean? And it's different for each person, and it's, you know, we want kids to feel safe in their school. We want everyone to feel safe walking down the streets, but it, it really helped everyone to do some internal, some internal thought. Thoughtful, you know, pondering around, what does that mean? What does it mean to be safe? And what can we all do to make that happen? So thank you, Superintendent, for getting everyone to think, you know, in a, kind of in a broader but more personalized way. In addition, I also presented to the Kiwanis Club on Tacoma Public Schools and what it was like to be a board member. And that was great, got a big reception and a lot of questions asked, and was able to share a lot of what we'd been doing this year that they did not know about. And then today, actually, I spoke at the Rotary Eight on, they, they wanted to talk about J Mac. And to learn a little bit more about what we're doing, and so gave them that whole spiel on, you know, one of our three categories and, and the pieces within. And the good news is, and I'll just sort of leak this a little bit, but they are considering, their big project. Committee is considering supporting three of our Tacoma Public School and Elementary Schools with investments and volunteerism. and elementary schools with investments and volunteerism and other ways to help support the various pieces that we're already doing, such as the initiative that we're doing, partnering with the Land Trust and with Metro Parks Tacoma to make sure that every student and every family in Tacoma can get to a park within a ten minutes from their house to walk, ten minutes from their house to get to a park, and right now that isn't the case, and we have five or six elementary schools where what we're gonna do is put parks on those elementary school grounds that are available to the public, you know, before and after school and when we're, when school's not in, in the weekends, et cetera, and it's gonna be exciting. So they're very excited about that project and ways that they can participate, so. Anyone else in the public who wants to partner with Tacoma Public Schools in, in terms of moving forward on these same kinds of issues, you know, we'd love to, love to have some conversation. So it's been busy, and it's all been moving towards this big happening next week, a week after next, so, actually, two weeks. So that is it for committee reports and updates, unless anyone else has anything on that. Okay? So item seventeen, Announcements of the Next Regular Board Meetings. September eighth, two thousand twenty-two, six P M, right here in this business, in this building. I hope it'll be cooler. We will have our business meeting, and then again, September twenty-second, we will also have a business meeting. And I want to thank all the staff, Tracy, and everyone else who found these fans, because it became a lot more comfortable after, with the help of the air, so thank you for running around and doing that. Appreciate it. Superintendent, do you have any closing thoughts, comments, things that you want to share?
No, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Deputy Superintendent, any comments or?
No, thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, then with that, anyone else up here? We are officially adjourned.
Go waves.
Don't let me right here.